I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council, 6:00 PM, Thursday, May 9, 2024. First item on the agenda is a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance to the flag, which will be led by Councilwoman Candace Hinton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hinton. This time we'll have a calling of the roll.
Councilperson Azar.
Present.
Councilperson Bowlin.
Present.
Councilperson Chalos.
Present.
Councilperson DeBon.
Here.
Councilperson Dinkel.
Present.
Councilperson Hinton.
Present.
Councilperson Lautermilch.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
Councilperson Thompson.
Here.
Eight are present, one is absent.
I've received a message today from Councilwoman Lautermilch that she had a commitment this evening and would not be joining us. At this time, we have 30 minutes of public comments for items that are not on the agenda. We ask you to come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and try to limit your comments to three to four minutes. First on the sign-up sheet is Donald Hyde. Mr. Hyde?
This is one of them rare days where only my impromptu speaking will come from me. I really had nothing to say. I've been thinking about three or four problems that are nationally, but this city council can't do much about the national problems. And I made up my mind how I feel about it anyway. But I do know this much: The election we had is over. And I will say this much about the election: Not very many people voted. However, I remember the 2020 election, and in the primaries, not very many people voted. That fall election, we set the record for the most people ever voting here. So I think it will be the same thing this next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Next on the speaker's list is Herb Rooks. Mr. Rooks?
My name is Herb Rooks. I'm at 1414 South Sixth. And I'm old enough to remember records, and I have a broken record. It's the fact that I keep skipping to the fact that you, as a council, have a responsibility to interact with the community. You need to set up a program where the community can gather and have some feedback with you. I'm so tired of talking to you people and getting no response. I don't understand why you feel as though you're empowered to the point where you can't interact with the community. And I will nag you and nag you and nag you until I get an answer. And I've started talking to some people, younger people, that I worked around last year. Two of them are graduating. They're leaving town because of work. You need to...I don't know what kind of outreach you have in the community, but I think it stops at your front door.
Thank you, Mr. Rooks. Is Councilman DeBon?
May I? Thank you. I'd like to respond to that. I've heard Herb come up and say this many times, as he said, as a broken record, I guess. Look, I'm not just going to speak for myself. I've been on this council for a while. I have put together and participated in a number of forums throughout the community involved with community issues, as have a number of my colleagues on the council. I've done it a lot. Lot of us have. Anybody who calls me and wants to talk to me about anything related to the community, I will meet with them. I will buy them a cup of coffee. If you want to talk to me, Herb, call me or email me, and I will buy you a cup of coffee, and I will talk to you. But I have not gotten an email from you or a phone call from you ever. So for you to go up there and to tell us that we are not talking and communicating with people in the community, it's not fair.
It is fair, because I'm old enough...I don't have a computer. I don't go online. I have to go to the library.
Call me.
Okay, yeah.
Call me.
Well, how do I get your number?
I'll give it to you before the meeting's over tonight.
Good. Thank you.
You're very welcome. I yield.
Thank you, Councilman DeBon. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to make a public comment on non-agenda items that didn't sign the sign-up sheet? All right, this time we'll close public comments. Michelle? Any corrections to the journal?
There are none.
Communications from the mayor?
Good evening, Councilwoman President Tammy Bowlin and the rest of the members of the city council. So quicker update than normal today. It's not an hour-and-a-half-long PowerPoint regarding municipal finance. Our city Parks Department is embarking on a Parks Master Plan. What is a Parks Master Plan? We are required to have a Parks Master Plan focused on five years. The county has just started theirs. We are lockstep in terms of working and collaborating with the county. Our assistant park superintendent and members of the Parks Board were there today at their stakeholder meeting. We will continue to work with them, because their plan and our plan should have a lot of similarities. We should have done one last year. We did receive a waiver and extension to do it this year. We have chosen Landstewart Design, the group that designed Fairbanks Parks, kind of newish designs. And we are really looking forward to those engagement sessions to chart out a map of what we can do the next five years in terms of parks to bolster our community's public health rankings, which are currently about 65 out of 92 counties. Our first big goal is, hey, let's get in the top 50. We've increased our summer programming, which is available on the Terre Haute City's website. You will also notice in your monthly or weekly revenue and expense reports that our programming revenue has increased. That is because the staff at the Parks Department is working nonstop to bring youth into our parks, seniors into our parks through programs like pickleball tournaments, summer day camps, even pottery and clay classes. So please give all of that a look. Our Parks Department also has a Facebook, and they're very active on that. Feel free to reach out to Kylie and Eddie with any thoughts, comments, and concerns. And you, of course, will be invited, as well as the community, to our stakeholder sessions as we develop that Parks Master Plan. So pending any questions, that's a very short update, but I'll go on later today. Today's report is about parks.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll see you on the slide, Councilman Nation.
All right. Michelle, any reports from city officials?
Yes, there is one.
Good evening, council. Diana Luther, Deputy Chief EMS with Terre Haute Fire. I just wanted to update you with our April run numbers. In April, we had 1,203 calls for service. 861 of those were EMS calls. We had 186 good intent calls or false alarms, 68 service calls, so that includes lip assist, illegal burns, animal rescues, 24 hazardous calls, so gas leaks, power lines down, or hazmat spills, 27 fires this can include buildings, vehicles, dumpster fires, and cooking incidents, and 38 false alarms. So that's all I have.
What's the difference between a good intent call and a false alarm?
So sometimes, like, a good intent would be someone fell down and they just needed a lip assist up versus a false alarm could be a residential fire alarm or a commercial fire alarm, and so...
Okay. Requires a response, but there's no action.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Michelle, reports from Board of Public Works and Safety?
I do not believe there are any.
Reports from standing committees?
There are none.
Reports from non-standing committees?
There are none.
Items previously tabled?
There are none.
Tax abatement for confirmation?
There are none.
Items on second reading?
Appropriation 25-2024, $250,000 from ARPA, number is 0199, Goodwill Excel Center, number is 0199, 000603439429.
Prosecutor?
I'm here tonight to say I request that we table this motion only because there is state funding that's allocated to this project based off of per head, per student that we believe this program can have. So those numbers are being finalized, and the location has been finalized, so we have to wait on some estimates and some bids. But that is for the Goodwill Excel Center, targeted to the 20% of Hoosier students in our school corporation that are not graduating college. It's a key component in workforce development, and it's paired with companies like your Great Danes, like those in the industrial park, as well as other companies. Where they come, they get a high school diploma, and we plug them back into the workforce. But you will hear more at next city council meeting.
Mayor Sackman, has the location been announced yet?
I don't...I mean, it's going to be...our goal's the Meadow Shopping Center. So we've got one story kind of on lock, and then we're looking at the second story as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Really, the basement, but yes. Bus stop, good location, also located to some grocery stores, so a lot of planning went into that.
Great. I think that's the first I've heard of that, but I've been curious. Thank you.
Do you need to make a motion to table?
Madam President?
Councilman DeBon?
Yeah, there be no further discussion. I will move that we table appropriation 25-2024 until June 6th.
Second.
June 6th.
Second.
All right. This time, we have a motion on the floor to table appropriation 25-2024. It's a June 6 meeting made by Councilman DeBon, seconded by Councilman Chalos. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Appropriation 25-2024 is tabled. Michelle?
General Ordinance 4, 2024, amending City Code, Chapter 7, Article 2, Responsible Bitter. As a reminder, you must vote to take action.
Prosecutor?
Good evening, Councilwoman Bowlin and members of the Terre Haute City Council. What you see before you today is, I call it a true responsible bidder's ordinance. For those in the audience, for those who are not well attuned, what is an RBO, Responsible Bitter Ordinance? So this is local public policy that ensures that responsible contractors are winning public bids. In this legislation, we add language to define what a responsible contractor is, right? Are they following proven federal standards? Do they have accreditation programs? You know, are they following the right laws, the right wages? In many communities across the state, RBOs are optional, but they have been passed, and it has led to higher construction standards. In 2021, there were over 50 in our state. We did look at other communities when we wrote this. We did look at federal standards when we wrote this. We did not, you know, add language or come up with language. This is approved in practice, and it's been much needed in our community for a long, long time. With that, I will take any questions.
Well, first, we will ask for public comments. Does anybody from the public have a comment to make on General Ordinance 4, 2024?
Donald Hyde, 1411 Poplar Street. If you're rewriting the laws determining who gets bids from taxpayer money, I'm all for that. However, you've got to watch how you do it, because you don't want to eliminate people that could do the work and do it right, but maybe they're not a big company. Maybe they were one or two people in their whole business, in their whole company. Doesn't mean they can't do the job. So you've got to make sure that when you rewrite this thing, you don't leave anybody out. Thank you.
Thank you. Want to comment?
Yeah, absolutely. That's actually a really good question. This is not about the size of the company or the quantity of the employees, yet this legislation is about the quality of the employees and the standards that they were trained on. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm John Bryan, business agent with Ironworkers Local 22 and a delegate of Wabash Valley Building Trades Council. We're in full support of this ordinance. It's a great tool for tax dollars to be responsibly spent on construction projects, and it just adds to transparency and accountability. So we're in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan. Anyone else in the public want to comment?
Jason King, 5656 Buffalo End Road. I represent the Central Midwest Regional Council of Carpenters. We represent over 35,000 members throughout the three states and over 550 of those right here in the Wabash Valley. As Mayor Sackman said, yes, that is...we're looking over a little over 50 RBOs throughout the state of Indiana. They are important. They set standards for wages to make sure that those construction workers on those projects are getting paid properly with tax deductions that involve the community. Some of these projects that we've seen in the past that have not been set under those standards, those individuals, one, do not work in this area, nor in this community, nor in the Wabash Valley. Therefore, no tax dollars are getting spent or getting paid here, and no of that hard working money is getting spent here. I've got literature here from IB Tech, State Community College, that they have an RBO in here that talks apprenticeship language, that apprenticeship language also talks about standards for the veterans associations. I think if an MCT like IB Tech can get something like this in their bid spec language and their Responsible Bitter Ordinance, I don't see why a city like Terre Haute couldn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Any other public comments? This time, we'll close public comments and open council discussion.
Madam President?
Councilwoman Thompson?
Thank you. Mayor, I just...initially, I did just a quick review, and, you know, obviously, I fully support this language, but some of the formatting, I guess, is a little off, and some of the language is a little off, just in terms of grammatic grammar. Was this, like, cut and pasted from another city's code, or who specific...do we know who specifically drafted it?
So we looked at Lake County, and then members of the council provided feedback, and then the city staff provided feedback. Are there specific sections that...yeah?
Well, just under criteria, you know, responsible bidder than A is, and must include, then there's the semicolon, but then it goes on to paragraph B, whereas it should go to an I, then 2Y, 23, like, things like that.
Yeah.
I'm just seeing a lot of those throughout the document. So they might still need some grammatical tweaking.
So I'm on page one...sorry, page two.
Right.
Criteria. Okay, I see it goes, "A responsive and responsible bidder shall meet all the bid and contract specifications," and shall colon, and it's A, B, C, D, E, F.
But in paragraph A, it says, "on a form designated by the city and must include," colon, and then it goes to B, C, D, E, F, where if you're indicating what it must include, it should be a separate...it should be a new subsection. Do you see what I'm saying?
You're an A. Can you just come and show me? Thank you.
Sorry. So if you're saying it must include, then I should just include...
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a good catch, Amanda. That's actually something I talked about.
That's great.
Yeah, so...and I think there's just a lot of that around the document that we probably need to...
Oh, we have a lawyer on the council.
Lawyer, no.
Okay, yeah, I see what you're saying, the formatting of the document itself.
And you can see somewhere where I started to tweak some of the words, too.
Yeah.
Just the language meshes.
If you want to send it to planning, or we can table it, and you can meet with Mike and I, and we can knock it out, whichever the council prefers, these are pretty quick fixes that we can get in order for the team.
It will automatically go to the June 6 meeting. You don't have to take...
Okay. When we do edits and we bring it back to the June 6...
It will say as amended.
As amended. Awesome. So we can go ahead and do that, clean up the formatting, so that way next week, we have one that is legal-ready. I got a B minus in business law. I don't know if you can tell.
P minus?
Senior year.
I dropped out of that class after week two, if it makes you feel any better.
Mayor, I'm so in favor of this, but I have a question. We've given out a lot of ARPA money. Does this ordinance cover those construction jobs, construction projects? Will this cover?
So it would be dependent on a project, right? So for example, let's take...let's take one that was not probably executed to the fullest extent, right? The Humane Society receives $250,000 to construct a vet clinic. Because some previous grant reporting practices, there was confusion of, do you submit an invoice that the contractor paid? Incorrect. We need a grant engagement letter to send those funds over to them for them to use at their discretion. So some entities will say, hey, we'll receive those funds and we'll use it to purchase, say, equipment, right? That is a separate situation. But if they are using it for construction, then there is a conversation of, okay, what are those funds used for? So you've noticed from January 1 of this year to now, when we have conversations of the appropriation, we break down the budget and say, hey, what are these funds being used for? Now, for example, brown stormwater, that one would be, because that is a local, fully local project with a sanitary bond and with ARPA dollars, so we have control of that. 13th and 8th Avenue Overpass is an NDOT project, so we are only able to pay for the match, and that is a state-run project bidded through the state. So, you know, it's a long-winded answer, saying it is, you know, dependent on the situation. Of course, you know, manor from seven, that's checked for a vehicle, so it isn't done there. But some universities have them already, and some universities are better than them, so that's something to keep in mind when we discuss collaboration. But if you'll see at the top, "The term includes the construction alteration or repair of a highway, street, alley, bridge, sewer, drain, or other improvement that is paid for out of a public fund or out of a special assessment." So there, when it's saying, you know, that public fund, that is us is the public, right? There are state and federal standard for state and federal projects that are elsewhere. Another good example there is, like, INTEC, and the conversation around INTEC, what's kind of...the reason why they're five months behind is, that's a DOE large grant project, so there's conversations with that company and the federal government to receive that federal grant around a conversation similar to this. We are not investing the $1.5 billion. The federal government and the private sector is, so they manage that conversation about that project.
One more part, since you mentioned the federal piece. And I'm not sure if redevelopment provision oversees the federal compliance of contracts and bids. It's very similar to RBO, and it's probably off conversation, but that's a question that I've been asking for a while, particularly as it relates to ARPA funds and some of the funds that come through goes directly to redevelopment and to other entities. How are we making sure that they're in compliance of Davis Bacon and other executive order 11246 for making sure that minority-owned businesses and women-owned businesses are a goal?
Yeah. So I'm going to break this down twofold. So first and foremost, redevelopment's compliance process does follow federal standards. So I recommend you go to redevelopment, sit with Phil. He'll show you on his computers how he does it. I'm sure it's very similar. Well, there were...have been some updates from when you were with the city of Evansville. The second part, executive order is great. We do look for that percentage of contractors that are minority-owned businesses. What we are seeing in the Hoosier State and in a lot of Midwest communities and communities in the South, the federal government says a percentage of your contract work should be minority-owned: veteran, African-American, women, you know, that list is codified. Businesses are struggling getting that accreditation and certification, and so just because someone owns a business and is...if they are not accredited through that process, which we cannot do, we do not do, there are resources to do it, like the Indiana Small Business Development Center, which I do push a lot of entities to say, hey, acknowledge, you know, I can acknowledge you and see you and recognize what your race, what your gender are, we can have a conversation about it, but unless you're accredited through that federal process, which the ISBDC does, then you are not just automatically eligible for 10% of the project because of the accreditation process.
No, I understand that. I get all that. I just want to make sure we have good faith in all of those projects, just the way that we're doing the city projects, that we're doing the RBOs and other projects. That's all. I know.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you know, truth be told, some of them, and the gentleman behind me, they'll...they could chime in, and I'm sure they might, but there were projects where ARPA dollars were spent from the city and county that went to general contractors that were not union-supported. And that's a huge reason why we are before you here today with this language to say, hey, you know, it'd be different if you use it for supplies and found some legal workaround, but they flat-out didn't. So there are some pieces that we've had to pick up, and this is helping us pick those pieces up.
Thank you. I yield.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Dinkel?
My colleague here kind of took my question there about the...no, you're good. You know, when I was running for office, I was...this was one of my talking points, is getting a Responsible Bitter Ordinance in place, and I'm all for this once we get the formatting fixed. I do think...I think it's a good start, is what I will say, and I look forward to voting for it when it comes back to the table. But I do think we need to start looking to what's next, because right now, this covers the city of Terre Haute government. When we go out and do a project, it doesn't include when we give a tax abatement to somebody. It doesn't include when we give somebody a million dollars to ARPA. And I know we have to work with legal and figure out what we can and can't do with state statute.
Yeah.
So again, I hope we will continue to look for that, and I would like to see that language in here in the future. So if somebody's going to come to us and ask for a 10-year abatement or whatever it is, fine, we're willing to help and stimulate business, but you've got to play fair.
Yeah.
And that's all I want to see in this in the future.
That's a great question, and that item, while it's not on the agenda tonight, I will comment on it. I have started that process. Some council members are assisting me in this process. We have reached out to AIM to look at tax abatement score sheets for municipalities, which is really what we're getting at. So we are looking at that, so that way, when we ask the question, are you using local contractors? It is not. Yes, and then a year from now, they give you a median wage and a total number of employees, and they didn't. So we are looking at that abatement score sheet, yes.
Yeah, and I think the abatement score sheet, certainly, we've talked about it.
Yeah.
Needs to be updated. But if we have the legal capabilities, it needs to be in this ordinance that you don't get extra points for being a responsible bidder. You must be a responsible bidder if you're going to take public tax dollars and subsidize your business. That's just...that's just my opinion. Yeah, I'm all for this.
Yeah, same ordinance, it's under the two sections.
I'm looking forward to supporting this. Thank you. I yield.
You guys can applaud. You're all setting our cheese on... Councilman Chalos?
I yield.
Yes.
He did.
I'm going to date myself a little bit here. I was part of the first RBO when Trent's daddy, Mike, was out there in the audience. And I agree with AJ. I don't think we went far enough on that one, for sure. I think that was the beginning stage, because we were trying to get something going. I think your dad will tell you. But I definitely think this is something we have to revisit and make sure it's got a lot more teeth in it, because if we're going to spend public funds, just like you said, and I mean, just, my God, what did we give away last week?
It's fun giving away money.
I mean, we should make sure...we should make sure that those are going towards good wages, going towards union, and not just that. I think Ms. Hinton is absolutely correct that we start helping some of the minority owners in this community. Get ahead.
I will plug the Indiana Small Business Development Center one last time. Please, please, please. I'm telling you, that certification is the difference-maker. We cannot do anything without it. It's an unfortunate bureaucratic process. Please look into that.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, are you sure?
Yeah.
I...it'll be short. I simply just wanted to echo and then provide my line of thought. I look forward to supporting this next month. And again, as Anthony mentioned, I like to see how it will evolve over time, because I think what we've got is a great foundation right now, and there will certainly be issues we need to come back and address in the future. So I look forward to that. I think we've got a good start. So I yield.
Thank you. Councilman Azar?
Yeah, I just...one question. How much does this differ from what was done previously?
A good amount, and it's...so if you look on page two, section 782, this is a very big part of it. Obviously, like, the language around "shall not discriminate" has been updated. Obviously, like the language around shall not discriminate has been updated.
Were the, were any of the amounts updated, like 150,000, 300,000?
No.
Okay.
No.
All right. I don't have the original in front of me.
And then, you know, really it's like a lot of it is this compensation insurance and then these apprenticeship programs. I, since I'm up here, going to shamelessly plug, the Vigo County School Corporation just built their 37th home with their hands-on skilled labor program, right? It's no secret that school corporation needs more funds and, and needs better facilities. But what those teachers are doing to feed into these organizations behind us should be commended, sending them to an apprenticeship program and not the roof rack contractors that we have seen.
Just one other thing, you know, I've been on this council 20, a little over 24 years. And in 24 years, you make a mistake on votes sometimes. So when I, I voted against this the last time, but I will support. So just want to know, I'm, I'm going to redeem myself, guys. Thank you. I yield.
Any other comments? Council comments?
Madam President.
Councilman Dinkle?
If there's no further discussion, I move to table General Ordinance 4, 2024.
We just don't need a tip act.
Oh, I, I withdraw, thank you.
So I'm going to ask him for a motion.
Tammy?
Oh, yes, you can come, go ahead.
I should real quick and then I'll shut up. I'm not trying to compete against anybody. So you stole my thunder there because I got tongue-tied up here earlier. But yes, it is important that we look at those tax abatements. I encourage you to look at Miami-Dade County in Florida. I know Mayor Sackbun has a copy of that. If he's lost it, I'll get one to him. That has some incentive programs and it works off a tier system, so percentages. The other thing was mentioned, mentioned on the ARPA money and they mentioned the Humane Shelter, which that, that clinic was needed. I understand that. That, that was a local contractor, I will agree. But if you were there during the, my part of it, the carpentry construction of it, it was an Amish descent workers on there. So there's, there's your taxes, right? And it's happening all the time with that specific contractor and other contractors that come into our community from outside of here and do not carry a good model with their workforce. So thank you.
Thank you.
One other thing. And I, I will say also that I was part of the original abatement form and I totally agree that it's time for an update on that, so.
Thank you. Any other council comments? So at this time, I would entertain a motion on General Ordinance 4, 2024. Anyone wish to make a mo- a motion on General Ordinance 4, 2024? Hearing none, this will move, for, for lack of action, this will move to the June 6 council meeting. Thank you, everyone. Also, Brandon, uh, I'm sorry, Mayor Sackbun. The ISBDC, the service that they provide to credit the small business is a free service, right?
Yes.
Yes. So that's it.
Some of the forms and permits do cost money, but the...
Right, but their service is completely free to any small business that wants to be accredited. So that's a, my plug for them as well. I've heard their presentation, it's really, really good. All right. Michelle, next on the agenda.
General Ordinance 5, 2024, Amendment City Code, Chapter 9, Article 5, Sections 9-116 and 9-117, Waste and Reps. Selection Piece. As a reminder, you must vote to take action.
Petitioner?
Good evening, Council President Mullen and members of the Terre Haute City Council. So today I prepared for you a short presentation to discuss why the conversation around the solid waste fee needs to be had. So members of this council were a part of the original solid waste fee, but let's go back in time a little bit and discuss how 16, 17 years ago, there wasn't a trash fee. Why? Well, before the property tax caps, this service was able to be contracted out at a very competitive price that saved the city. When we had the property tax caps and $35 million went away from the city budget, services that had previously been completely subsidized through the form of property tax were now no longer subsidized. A fee was introduced several years ago that it had climbed to $11. In the time that that fee was introduced and passed to now, a subway foot long was $5. Now it's about 15, $16.99 if you get bacon on it. The public sector is struggling because, you know, the corporate companies have continued to have this conversation around inflation and really it's price gouging. Our trash contract is arguably the most competitive in the state. And I'll touch on that in here. Not just the services that we get, but our actuator, our, our percentage increase to that contract year after year after year. We are fortunate enough to be in a 20-year contract locking us in, in and around 3%. Other municipalities are seeing their trash contracts increase by 10 to 15% and they sign one to three-year agreements. So we are fortunate enough to have a, a very strong and solid trash contract. Apologies for the typo there. Okay, so let's take a look. We did a trash fee comparison in Accelerate Indiana Municipalities AIM, right? So we conducted a trash fee study and 2/3 of the cities and towns surveyed use private contractors for recycling and trash. The highest fee, as you can see, is $26. The average cost for contracted service was $16. But here's where I ran into that first aha moment. When we compare pricing, it, it's a disingenuous process because the services offered are completely different in some of these trash contracts. Large item pickup for a lot of these municipalities varies. Once a week, we're seeing that, not that frequent. We are a once a week when it comes to Republic. Hal in the city will go up and do 311 calls and have increased that capability, but we're talking about just a trash contract now, right? A lot of them do have yard waste service, but it is not once per week. A lot of times you are seeing, there is a fee to large waste pickup. Here are some of the services that we currently get that other municipalities do not. Weekly yard waste leaves, large item pickup. And I encourage folks to use the 311 app because you can literally attach a picture of where those items are at. Of course, you can call in, but honestly, in terms of user friendliness, that one helps our staff the most and Republic. Additionally, we have special events, festivals, community cleanups incorporated, street department drop-off, and municipal buildings all included in this contract. Take a look at this graph on the right. So with the trash fee with the proposed increase, which today we are bringing to you a $15 total charge, that's an increase from 11 to 15. And go ahead and look at some of the other cities around us. Keep in mind, our county is much higher than $15. So let's talk about that proposed trash fee. See, this year we're looking at $15. You will see a 3.33% actuator and a 3.2% actuator, right? That increase, it should be right at 3.33, but when we start breaking the percentages down, it's not clean. It's, it's not a flat fee. And here's the concerning part, our trash bills are on our sewage bills. So individuals will see this and say, oh my gosh, they, they took our sewage up, they took our sewage up. No, we did not. We took a fixed service and adjusted that service. But I really want to point out this proposed change right now. If you're disabled, blind, a disabled veteran, or a spouse, or you are a senior, you used to get a 25% decrease, right? If you were working through the county and it was on your tax record, you could come to sewage billing, and a lot of folks didn't know this, and actually receive a 25% increase. So those groups should be charged $9 US dollars. We are going to take that to 33%. By taking it to 33%, these groups will be charged $10. The groups that are hardest with inflation because they're on fixed income will see the lowest increase. We are also going to do a change. The recycling credit was 25%. Now we are saying, if you do curbside recycling, which we have free centers where you can drop off, your increase will be 50%, right? Because recycling is paid and it's paid quarterly. So we are going to publish the information of how to get the discount, not just on social media. We will use our media partners to help our seniors, the individuals hit hardest during the pandemic with rising inflation and corporate greed and allow them an opportunity to receive the discount that they so rightfully deserve. So why are we doing a trash fee increase? Many will ask, why have we not done it the past few years? Well, I'm going to be very direct and clear here. The solid waste collection based off the $11 fee has been substantially lower than our contract, not because the contract drastically increased, but when it was taken to $11, it never fully caught up. And then we had just a natural 3% actuator. Last year alone, $764,000 was paid from the sanitary district to the general fund to cover this contract because we had not raised the price. Imagine the studies, the stormwater improvements, the sewage improvements, we could have done with that $764,000 if we had used it for the reason that it was collected. Does that make sense there? I do want to pause there. Sometimes there's some question on that. So at this time, I'll go ahead and, uh, we'll open the public comment and then I'll take any questions from the public or the council.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on General Ordinance 5, 2024?
Donald, I, well, I like hearing the part about the senior citizens only having to pay $10, that's good. Even I can afford that. However, I still don't know how much trash is being picked up. See, it's easier to understand the public, at least understands it better. If you give us a number of what, how much trash was picked up in 2020 compared to 2024 right now? Is there less trash being picked up? More trash being picked up? Is it heavier? Does it take up more space? Why are we paying? In order to understand if it's fair or not fair, you really got to have an idea, tell the public how much trash is being picked up a year and be able to say, in 2020, we picked up this much trash for the whole year. Whether we paid for it or not, I don't care. How much was actually picked up? Then now, what, what trash is being picked up? In other words, are we basically picking up more trash or less trash? Thank you.
Yeah, that's good.
So, you know, Governor By really started a solid waste district program, right? Where solid waste districts were created to help monitor trash and trash at large. As a state, we are amongst the worst in the nation when it comes to trash per person over a lifetime, with it being 55 tons. We did start composting and recycling, not at all paid from these funds or these budgets. One more time, David. Not at all paid from these funds or these budgets. Those new programs that were started were through the solid waste district. That is lowering our total tons, our total amount of trash and diverting it cycling into compost facilities. In terms of total trash, we offer a 96-gallon tote. Some of the other communities that you saw, this is, again, this is why it's hard to compare rates, because a lot of those communities, it's not a 96-gallon or that's the price for a 96-gallon and you can get a smaller sized tote for a different charge. We have a flat rate for the largest tote that we can offer residents. This is not including commercial businesses, commercial dumpsters. There are some other ordinances that I would love to bring you later this year when it comes to commercial businesses and shutting their trash bin, which might help some of the trashy problems that we see in our community. But Donald, to be quite frank, there's a lot of trash in Terre Haute and we've got to pick it up.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on General Ordinance 5, 2024? Of course, public comments and open council discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Dinkle?
Mayor, I, I really like the 50% increase to incentivize recycling. Do you know off the top of your head, it's okay if you don't? How much does it cost a citizen to, to subscribe to a recycling program?
I can't, I can't remember. It's 750 or 775 and then it's a quarterly payment, not a monthly payment.
Yeah, and they, they empty every other week, I believe.
Yes.
I, I think that's a great incentive to offer within this to, you know, yeah, yeah, we may have to make an increase, but if you want to subscribe to recycling and try to keep it out of the landfill, that's a, I think that's good.
Yeah. And to be completely honest, Councilman Dinkle, I actually expect some of our weekly, or sorry, bi-weekly prescribers to stop because of the facility at 14th and Demme. I mean, that is, it looks phenomenal there. The amount of items that are being recycled, a glass dumpster is coming, we are having to bring in a larger dumpster that, that Republic covered. And they want less money to go to the landfill. Because over time, that landfill, the, the physical space it occupies does not grow, right? So over time, if they're diverting from their landfill, they are more profitable. So believe it or not, they are very, very involved and think highly of our community because we are doing composting and recycling.
Okay. And regarding, I forget what the number was, 746,000 overage, just so I get this straight, we didn't collect enough fees to pay for this contract that we're under for the service. So we're, we're making that difference up by roughly 3/4 of a million dollars each year, since the fee is not sustainable essentially.
Yes, that's a fair assessment. Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Vaughn?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. I was on the council in 2016 when we passed the, the trash fee. Has that contract with Republic changed at all since 2016?
It is. We signed a 20-year extension based at the same percentage increases that they are. So they haven't ratcheted up to like 10 to 15%.
Okay. And if we renew, if, if we renewed that 20-year contract, do you know when that expires now? It has got to be over. Never mind, that's not even, that's pretty far down the road.
2037.
Yeah, that is definitely quite a ways down the road.
I won't be here anymore.
Before I yield, I, I do want to say one good thing about this. I agree with Anthony. I remember in 2016, a number of us who were on that council were really wanting to see more on the recycling front. And I, I think that is a positive I can say about this. I will yield.
Thank you. Councilman Dink, or Councilman Nation?
Brandon, do I understand that you just said that a new 20-year extension has been signed, the contract's already been signed?
Yes, but I might have, I need to look at that exact number because City Legal said 2037.
I, I think I can offer a little bit of insight there that one of the first items on the Board of Public Works agenda during the administration was, there was a, an agreement that ran through 2027 and the prior administration, we'd even done some work with them to try and give them permission to include another 10-year extension on top of that. It did not happen and it was one of the first items that took place. So it's a 10-year extension to an agreement that was set to expire in 2027.
Which had originally gone into effect in 2017, so that's why.
20 years.
So it's a, so it's a 10-year, well, wait. Is it 2027 or 37?
Well, we signed an extension onto the 2027 expiration date. We signed a 10-year extension onto that expiration date. So we took it from what was set to expire in three years to 13.
Okay, got it.
On top of the seven that had already existed, for the total.
And this is a contract with Republic which has been our vendor since...
2007.
Right.
I, I don't know. I believe it's been the only vendor the city has ever contracted with for trash services as going back in the records that we went, went through. It was the only contract that I could, the only vendor that I saw on the other side of a contract with the city.
I'm surprised that it wasn't put out to bid or was it put out to bid? Do we know?
It was, it was not put out to bid, Councilman Nation. The fact of the matter, I think with a landfill operated by the same entity in the community in which we reside, they have worked hard to establish and show, you know, any elected official that they want to work with them to maintain their... official that they want to work with them to maintain their good perception in the community and work to, you know, kind of operate where they also set an area for, you know, the final resting place for, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
We can't really get, I mean, we, I reached out to try and get some other quotes before we walked into just having the conversation about not bidding in the extension, and the numbers, just they're not there because the landfills, they would take them, we're talking about transportation costs.
Right.
Even if they were lower, the transportation cost, you got to understand, there's, now that we have dumpsters with trash moving large mile, and then now trash is falling out, there's just a litany of things that start to add up. You know, if you wanted to look at $27 to $32 an hour, there's a conversation there. But this is by far our best contract. We have other mayors call the office trying to get this contract.
I'm asking because my service on the council, like Councilman Azar's, goes back far enough that I remember when the original 20-year contract was entered into with Republic, and I remember that it happened in a similar moment, right at the change of administrations, with one administration going out, signing a contract, pointing at the, leaving the other, the next administration with, well, with, leaving everybody with questions, I'll just put it that way, about what had gone down and whether or not there had been bids and how fair the process was. All that said, I totally understand your point about Republic having a landfill here in this community, and the 20-year contract we were in before has proven to be a good one for the city. I think we came out on the good end of that deal, especially looking back hindsight, and I don't really see a reason why this one won't play out the same way because of the same dynamics that you guys have described. That said, I, I think I'd feel better about this if I had heard more about it before tonight. This is the, honestly, this is the first I've heard of these actions that have apparently already been taken, that we're now being asked to, to enshrine in, in new fees. So I'll stop there and yield. Thank you.
Now, I'll certainly take responsibility for that, Councilman Nation. I mean, the, coming into the position in, in January, as I said, I can absolutely say there was consideration given to looking at the history behind the agreement, why they were asking for an extension now, whether that rate that we were seeing in the agreement and the escalator clause, you know, that they had asked for was competitive. And I should have done a better job of communicating the fact that that was going on to the council because, I mean, truth be told, it was something that occupied, you know, the first few weeks that I was in that position. So I will do better on those issues moving forward.
Thank you, Michael. I'm not trying to embarrass you, I'm just trying to express.
Yeah, I mean, you should have been informed that there was a substantive extension of a big contract that affects a big percentage of the city budget. So, I mean, that is totally reasonable for a fiscal body to have that information on the front end of the conversation rather than the back end.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Mayor Sakban told us at our last meeting about, well, and the contractor told us about, gave us a good financial report and told us about ways that we need to tighten up our bookkeeping, do a better job with transparency, for lack of a better way to put it. I'm curious about, I guess now it's my turn to be embarrassed, as a seated council member, I'm a little mystified by where 3/4 of a million dollars was in the records that we didn't know was being spent by the Sanitary District to cover the shortfall in fees. Can you explain that to, I mean?
That's a good question. So previous, previous groups had taken that transfer anywhere from one to four times. Sometimes it was at the end of the year, sometimes it was split up in multiple payments, and that conversation was had with the Sanitary Board to make that appropriation from that fiscal group to this fiscal group. So taking it from a different budget instead of a budget that is, that we bring to you for appropriations. So that's, that's how that was had.
Yeah, I've only recently started attending Sanitary District Board meetings again, and I wasn't doing...
Didn't see you Tuesday.
Well, if I could make it, the last one I went to was very enlightening, when they updated us on the combined sewer overflow plan and all the numbers around that. And it made me think, after, you know, a two-hour freewheeling, very informative conversation, that I need to try to make time for those meetings.
We're scheduling one of those with you. So wait, do you know how we just had that 2017, 2027, 2037 discussion? You commonly hear the term 30-year long-term control plan, but it's the start date of that 30-year plan that will create another issue where it's like, hey, here's our 30-year sewage plan, but wait, it started seven years ago, so you have 23 years to do this or that. Expect this conversation in a full presentation on combined sewage overflow, hopefully around July. So we did get feedback from IDAM on that, and there's some things we need to tighten up.
Has IDAM given us a time, a window? Is it 20 or 30 years to comply?
We are still pursuing a 30-year compliance plan.
But we haven't gotten an actual, okay, thank you. I'll stop. I'm sorry to lead us off topic. I yield.
Councilman DeBon?
Thank you. I did support the trash fee in 2016. At that time, as a number of you recall, we were in what I would consider a very dire financial situation here in the city, and I felt that it was necessary. I still believe without doubt it was necessary to do this back in 2016. I felt there would have been very real consequences if we had not done so in 2016. I don't know if I feel this is necessary yet. That's just me, that's my opinion. But again, I just learned of this very recently too, and I haven't had time to fully digest all of it, I guess. But from what I have looked at, I just, I don't know if I personally believe it is a necessary increase currently. I've been aware of the shortfall. I knew that the fee didn't completely cover the full amounts. I knew that when we put the fee into place. But I just don't know if we need to do it. That's my opinion, my own thinking. I yield.
Councilman DeBon?
Yeah.
Our 30-year long-term control plan is sitting at a total dollar cost of $330 million, of which $129 million are stormwater improvements throughout the city. Those dollars are financed through the State Revolving Fund, through the Sanitary Board, and through the budget that we have been taking money from and using it to pay this out. So every dollar that is collected when it comes to sewage in the Sanitary District will have to be utilized to the highest extent to avoid sewage rate increases.
If, that leads me to my next question. I'm sorry if I yielded out of me too. So what you are implying, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong. If we do approve this smaller increase on the trash fee, that will, I want to use this language correctly, potentially either eliminate the possibility in the near future of a sewage rate increase or limit the amount that we would have to raise the sewage fee in the near future? Is that accurate?
The administration is looking at every opportunity to delay or postpone any sewage rate increase, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Councilwoman Thompson?
Thank you. I would say I'm the sponsor on this. It concerned me knowing that we were having to take from one budget to move to another. And, you know, I live in other cities in the state, and an $11 trash fee is just remarkably low. And it goes back to some of the other things that we've heard throughout this year. Where our fees sit in comparison to other similar situated cities, we are very much below that. And seeing that graph, again, just really hit home again. And I think that is part of what is attractive to our cities, it is an affordable place to live. But when that affordability comes at the cost to moving, you know, having to play with the numbers and fudge numbers, it just, it's messy. I don't like it. And I think that goes to some of the concerns that were raised on the last week's meeting. I mean, moving this money and fudging numbers, it's not something we should be doing. So if we're in a position to be able to raise the trash fee and the money for sewer stays where it is, and we're also raising it to a still very affordable rate in comparison to other cities, and again, as we are, some of you I spoke about, the incentivizing for the recycling, and then also the ability for those with limited income to be able to gain exemption to that. It's something that needs to be done, and quite frankly, I'm shocked it wasn't proposed sooner, to go this many years with this such of a huge amount of a shortfall. Quite frankly, it's embarrassing. So having this here today, I'm fully in support of, and I think it's just something that we need to do. And if we don't do it now and wait another seven years, or however long it's been, we're going to be back, back right where we were, you know, a year or two now with a million-dollar shortfall. So let's clean it up now, let's fix it now. That's all. I yield.
Any other counsel? Councilman Chalos?
Yeah, I agree with Councilwoman Thompson. And after the mayor mentioned the county, I took the opportunity to text a few friends that live in the county and just got some answers, and I'm getting anywhere from 25 to 30 bucks from them, right? So you're potentially half of what people in the county do for the same service. So I commend the mayor. I mean, after last week and listening to Tim Berry, I commend the mayor for taking the bulls by the horn. I mean, we've got some things we have to correct, some things we've got to get done. It's not fun for any of us, and I'm sure as a new mayor, it's not fun for him either.
Yep.
But again, he has to right the ship, right? And the only way we can do that and keep solvent is to do some of these things and clean house and do some things that we haven't done in a while. So, and all along, also minimizing the effects on seniors, veterans, and some other folks. So I commend you for that also. So I yield, but I want to commend the mayor for doing what he's doing and looking for ways to right this ship with the smallest effect to the folks in this community.
Councilman Azar?
Yeah, Mayor, just one question. You may not even know the answer at this point in time. I mean, the credit for, these credits that you're offering for, say, a senior citizen, do you know how many that would affect?
That's a great question. I don't have that information at this time. I know, we did run the numbers. I'll have to get with the Controller's Office.
I'll talk. Thank you. I yield.
Anyone else? Councilman Chalos?
And thank you for the cost of the subway with and without bacon. I do appreciate that too. I don't appreciate the fact you're going there and not to Saratoga.
All right. Any other council comments? I guess I have a question. Probably Michael needs to answer this. We know we've got a lot of ordinances that are requiring some oversight, maybe some provisions. This not going out for bid doesn't put us in violation of any other ordinance that you're aware of, does it? I've got the city code here, and if I look up Board of Public Works, there's so many, so many hits that I can't find anything.
No, yeah. On a city trash contract, no, you're, you're fine to deal with, I mean, it's like a professional service, you know? I mean, you can rely on the professional reputation of the company for the services they provide in dealing with that issue. So, yes, no, we're not, it's not a problem. It was part of, you know, anytime you're coming into a new position and there's some issue that is a holdover and it, but it's very urgent, you know, I mean, that gives you, it gives me a reason for pause. So absolutely, consideration was given to making sure that we weren't not doing anything that was going to create any unintended consequences.
I assume that was the case. I just wanted to make sure, because we do have a lot of ordinance.
And I don't want to, you know, Republic has been a partner with the solid waste district and the city for a long time, so I don't want to pretend there was ever any animus, but certainly we had to give it the due diligence that it deserved.
Thank you. And Mayor, how are we going to track all of this, these credits, these available credits? Is that going to add to someone's administrative responsibilities or?
I'm confident that between the Controller's Office and sewage billing, we can handle this task.
I'm sure you can.
Yes. I mean, they're already doing it. Like, the credits are already offered, we're just adjusting the rate.
Right, but I'm hopeful that in marketing of this and sharing it with our public, that folks that are utilizing that will increase dramatically.
Great example is the PET fee. We added some marketing on that. There was a slight increase on that. All city staff were able to accommodate and manage that.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll yield on that. Any other comments? At this time?
I was going to say, if there be no further discussion, I make a motion that we take action on General Ordinance 5, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to take action on General Ordinance 5, 2024, made by Councilwoman DeBon, seconded by Councilman Chalos. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We can take action on General Ordinance 5, 2024.
Madam President?
Councilwoman Thompson?
I would move that we, I moved that we had passed. Okay, moved that we pass.
Approved.
Approved.
Approved. Approved, General Ordinance Number 5, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve General Ordinance 5, 2024, made by Councilwoman Thompson, seconded by Councilman Azar. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? General Ordinance 5, 2024 is approved. Michelle?
Resolution 15, 2024, proclaiming April 28, 2024 as Workers Memorial Day.
Sure. A couple of Sundays ago, myself, Councilwoman Boland, and Councilman Dinkle accepted the invitation of the Debs Society to, the Eugene P. Debs Foundation, to come and participate in the first Workers Memorial Day celebration in Terre Haute. Now, Workers Memorial Day has been celebrated in other communities for a few years, but this is the first time we did it in Terre Haute. Mayor Sakban sent a proclamation, which was read by Councilwoman Boland. He had guard that weekend, couldn't participate. And then Councilman Dinkle and I read this resolution together. I'm sorry that we didn't get it before the council, before the day, so that you could consider it before we read it. But I'm willing to read it into the record right now. In fact, Anthony, I think we should do it the way that we did it at the event itself.
Do it together, did he say?
Yeah, well, since, since we were both there with the intention of, each with the intention of reading it, we split it up. And I went first, so I'll start it, and it goes, and it's short, so bear with us. "Be resolved by the common council of the city of Terre Haute, Indiana. Whereas we recognize improvements..." that weekend, couldn't participate, and then Councilman Dinkle and I read this resolution together. I'm sorry that we didn't get it before the council, before the day, so that you could consider it before we read it, but I'm willing to read it into the record right now. In fact, Anthony, I think we should do it the way that we did it, at the event itself.
Did it together, did he say?
Yeah, well, since, since we were both there with the intention of, each with the intention of reading it, we split it up, and I went first, so I'll start it, and it goes, and it's short, so bear with us. "Be it resolved by the common council of the Terre Haute, of the city of Terre Haute, Indiana, whereas we recognize improvements in worksite conditions since the passing of the Occupational Safety and Health Act, commonly known as OSHA, in 1971." And?
"Whereas we remain committed to the ongoing advocacy of labor activists in the city, in our city, to continue improving workplace quality through regular inspections and high standards of health and safety measures." And?
"Whereas we come together today to increase awareness that job site injuries, illnesses, and fatalities are not simply accidents, but are often avoidable and preventable." And?
"Whereas we support the call for good jobs, safe jobs, and the protection of worker rights, and we pledge to continue seeking ways to make this aspiration a reality." And?
"Whereas we honor the legacy of Eugene Victor Debs, who was proud to call Terre Haute his home, and was ahead of his time in his vision of equality and justice." And?
"Whereas above all, here at the local level, we must be conscious of the invisible, most vulnerable workers in our midst."
"Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Terre Haute City Council, join city and county government leaders all over the United States, who are gathering as we are today, to proclaim Sunday, April 28, 2024, to be Workers Memorial Day." So, that's what we read, and if you, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try to...
So at this time, we'll ask for public comments on Resolution 15, 2024. Mr. Hyde?
I'm Wayne Hyde, 1411 Poplar Street, Terre Haute, Indiana. As far as I'm concerned, Mr. Debs, I think I'm getting it right, is one of the top 10 people that ever lived in this city, and I'm all for this, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Close public comments and offer a council comment, open the floor. Councilman Azar?
I'd just like to congratulate Councilman Dinkle, I think he had harder words than...
It was a proud moment, I videotaped it.
And you yield?
I yield.
Oh, all right. Any other council comments? At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 15, 2024.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to approve Resolution 15, 2024, made by Councilman Dinkle, seconded by Councilman Nation, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 15, 2024 is approved.
Thank you.
Anything else, Michelle?
Move to adjourn.
Point of order, should we talk about the special call meeting that was, but now isn't?
There have potentially been a special call meeting on May 22nd, that has now been canceled.
That's it.
And just a reminder, you may receive notice of a special call meeting prior to the June 6th meeting, or did we decide June 13th?
6th.
6th. For lovely discussion of compliance and benefits forms, your favorite.
Of what?
Tax abatement.
Yeah, I'll move to adjourn again. Second. Sorry.
We have a motion to adjourn made by Councilman Azar, seconded by Councilwoman Hinton, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good evening, thank you, everyone.